We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, zero absent.
We'll stand for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent items. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for the consent items. Discussion. Calls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion does carry. Schedule hearing. Bruce, are you going to take care of that? Vacation of the Western Interceptor right-of-way.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council. Being proposed is the vacation of a portion of the sewer right-of-way that was purchased for the Western Interceptor. The reason for the requested vacation is that we no longer need it identified as right-of-way or as a separate plat. Since that plat was filed, we have filed the plat of Industrial Park 4th Edition, and the lots alongside this right-of-way are described in that Industrial Park 4th Edition plat up to and including these parcels identified in the right-of-way plat. So, to keep the confusion down in the future while transferring parcels, we'd like to be able to just describe it as a lot in a block in Industrial Park 4th Edition and not have to deal with the separate description of the Western Interceptor right-of-way. We will be retaining that property as easements within the plat, so we will make sure that those easements are noted and are recorded easements, and so there won't be any question with the city's access to that property in the future. It'll just be easier for the city to describe it, and it'll be easier for buyers to deal with that property. So I'd like to recommend that the council adopt the resolution that vacates this right-of-way from the sewer interceptor.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council. Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the vacation of the Western Interceptor right-of-way for ease of selling the property. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. This evening, we've got the distinct privilege of having former councilmember Jim Dawkin in attendance along with his family, so if you guys would like to come forward, I'd All three of you get to come up.
How are you? Good to see you this evening, and thank you for taking the time to come out so that we can properly recognize you. Mr. Dawkin, Councilmember Jim Dawkin has served on the Wilmer City Council representing residents of the 4th Ward since first elected on November 3rd, 1998, and took office on January 11th, 1999. During his term in office, he has served both on the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, as well as been a liaison to the Rice Hospital Board, Airport Commission, and Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission. His long military career has enabled him to represent the veterans of this city. He continues to be instrumental in Memorial Day activities in the Flags of Honor Park, along with assisting the Veterans Day Memorial held annually at the city auditorium. Mr. Dawkin, for your years of service, I would like to present you with a plaque. If you'd like to come forward, I'd like to present that to you and your lovely wife. So thank you so much for your years of service. I really appreciate it. Jim, I'd like to offer you the opportunity to make a few comments if you would like. When you walked into my office that day in the City Hall, you really took me by surprise. You kind of set me back in my heels, and I don't know, Held, if that was, if my face showed that or not. Anyways, it was quite a surprise, but I certainly do value your opinion to be able to spend more time with families, so I'll certainly respect that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your kind words. First and foremost, I'd just like to say I want to thank God for his strength in my life. It's, you know, there are highs and lows in your life, and he's always there whether it's a high or a low. He's there to help. That's his job, and that's why his son died on the cross for us. And so, it's a blessing to be finished with it, quite frankly, but I did enjoy every minute at every committee meeting, retreats. We had a lot of fun, and it's just time to say goodbye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the open forum.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Could I, Mr. Dawkin? Mr. Dawkin?
He had requested that we just thank him for his service.
You did?
That was his request, yes.
Well, I just want to say I've remembered three things. What are we doing? Why are we doing it? And how are we going to sustain it? Thank you.
On behalf of the citizens.
Thank you. Next, we have the open forum, and first on the agenda, we have Bob Enos. Bob Enos, 905 Trot Avenue, Southwest. On the heels of Jim's gracious send-off, the reason I'm here, one of the reasons I'm here is that recently Jessica Roloff wrote a letter to the West Central Tribune on behalf of the League of Women Voters, strongly urging and advocating that the replacement for Jim's vacancy come from an open, fair and open election from the members of his ward. And for what it's worth to you, I'm here to strongly support and urge that you all follow the League of Women Voters' recommendation. You know, Jim reminds me, he's been a very faithful and strong veteran all these years. I've heard that one of the objections to having an open election so soon might be that it's expensive, and I can't help but think that Jim and his fellow veterans and those soldiers who now are in Afghanistan and Iraq, helping to set up governments and give people the opportunity to govern themselves with free and open elections, might question our willingness to forego fair and free elections for a $20,000 bill, whether there's two months left to the term or two years. The only people those folks get to elect to represent them in this town are two council people. I don't think anybody else in any other part of the city, since we don't have open ward seats, should be allowed to make that determination by them. Secondly, maybe you've noticed in the last weekend or so that I've been pretty involved in the ongoing discussion and debate about the economics of refugee resettlement in West Central Minnesota this past weekend. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Three minutes? Time's up. Yep. Thank you. Jessica Roloffs.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin, and members of the council. My name is Jessica Roloff, 3501 15th Avenue, Southeast, Wilmer, Minnesota. I am here tonight representing the League of Women Voters, and I do rise to speak on behalf of League as it pertains to the council's pending decision regarding whether to fill Councilmember Dawkin's seat vacancy through a special election or by appointment. One of the primary goals of the League is to promote an open governmental system that is representative, accountable, and responsive. I received this light reading material today from the League, so it really clarified what I wanted to say to you tonight. We would highly recommend that you go through the process of an election. This person will serve on the council for approximately a year at least, and just that, yes, there's many times when it's eight-zero, but those aren't the controversial times. And I'm afraid that there is a serious division in Wilmer right now, and if you go through an election, then it's a fair process. People feel heard, and I think it would go a long way to restoring us back to a more cohesive unit in this town. Point of personal privilege, I would like to say that Councilmember Dawkin has always treated us with the utmost respect, and so it is with little sadness that we do see him go. And he always, always remembers. My sister's a veteran, and he always asks after her, and that's the kind of person that we need on council, someone who remembers who the people are in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a certificate of commendation from Governor Dayton. Mr. Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a liaison for the Wilmer Downtown Development Incorporated Committee, and at our July meeting, there was an envelope that came, and lo and behold, it was a certificate commendation signed by the governor. Now, the reason we got this, we are the first city in Minnesota to be accredited nationwide for our achievements in revitalizing downtown Wilmer. Now, I know some people want Wilmer to be the way it used to be, but it never will, so we're starting a different way of revitalizing it, and you have to start somewhere, and this committee is doing a fairly good job. We are also the first city to become a designated city in the state of Minnesota. We are the first city to become accredited by the state of Minnesota, and we are the first outstate city in Minnesota to participate in the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota's Fix-It Program, which has allowed Wilmer Downtown Development to purchase historic 313 Fourth Street and renovate it as a regional local food hub, and that should be opening end of August here. So, it's a hard-working committee. They meet once a month, and they are short a couple of board members, so if anyone is interested, you could call the director, and that'd be Bev Dotery, and she's in the audience, but they didn't have any other place to go with it. I said, "Bring it to the mayor, and we can hang this at City Hall."
You bet. I'd be delighted to hang that in my office, or where else, if the city administrator would like it hung someplace else, but that would be, that would be great.
I didn't know that Downtown Development was going to take it, so.
So, yeah, so I guess, yeah, Bev, if you wanted that back, we'd give it back to you freely, so.
You should.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. And thanks to you, Rick, for serving on that committee, and thanks for all the hard work of the committee, so. Okay, next on the agenda is the League of Minnesota Cities Legislators of Distinction for 2015. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, we've received from our League of Minnesota Cities Board of Directors a note that the Board of Directors recognized 28 legislators this year, 11 House members and 11 Senate members, for their actions and leadership on a wide variety of legislative issues with importance to cities across the state, especially cities of our size, and they have a letter describing the specific reasons why our legislator was chosen. But they've asked us to bring attention to that at our city council meeting and the public at our council meeting, and that's what we're doing tonight. We also share this information with our local newspaper, but we'd like to publicly acknowledge legislators for their effort in city-friendly legislation and continue strengthening that partnership between the state and local government officials of Minnesota. And our senator is on that list.
Great. Well, we'll make sure and thank him for being friendly to cities of greater Minnesota, so. Okay. Anybody have any comments on that? Okay, Finance Committee report. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee met Monday, July 27th. First item was public comments, and there are no comments from the public. The next item was ongoing discussion on the fire department self-contained breathing apparatus, and we took that for information. Staff explained to us that back in December 2014, the fire chief at that time, Gary Hendrickson, discussed with and received approval from the city administrator to verbally order 50 self-contained breathing apparatuses with a commitment to purchase them in 2016. The SCBA's and apparatuses were listed on the 2016 CIP for an estimated $340,000. Staff noted that it is not common practice for the city to use a verbal order, and that per the city auditor, there are no legal requirements to honor this order. Fire Chief Frank Hanson and Mayor Marv Kelvin have been discussing this matter with the city attorney for any legal ramifications. Chief Hanson stated that there are no grants available for 2015 or 2016 fiscal year, and since Wilmer's equipment is currently only one step behind the standard, the city will not be eligible for a grant until 2019. However, the useful life of the SCBA's is 15 years, and Wilmer's equipment will reach that on April 1st, 2016. Staff noted that the council's option in this matter include, one, leaving it as a verbal order with the company, assuming full liability, or officially authorizing any and all of the purchase. We took that for information only. I will share with you that the day after the meeting, I received a forward of an email that had come to city staff from the city attorney that gave us some additional options. For some reason, that was not presented to us at the meeting, so as we move this forward, I think that we will look at that, at the recommendations that the city attorney has recommended, and see if that's the way to finally resolve this. It was disappointing that we didn't have that information at the meeting. The next item was the purchase and reallocate funds for the Civic Center Toolcat. Staff explained to the committee that the 2015 CIP included $60,000 for the purchase or replacement of the forklift at the Civic Center with the Bobcat Toolcat. The current forklift did not meet OSHA standards for indoor use and was recommended for replacement after a safety walk-through at the Civic Center. The Toolcat is OSHA-approved multi-use machine with forks, snowblower, and mowing attachments, making it more versatile for various tasks. The total purchase price for the new Toolcat is $67,769.24 from Farm Right Equipment Incorporated. Staff is requesting $7,769.24 of unused funds from the purchase of four Kubota mowers to be reallocated for this expenditure. It was noted that this item has already been ordered and received, but that had not been brought to the committee for approval until now. The council's policy is that staff is to bring any item on the CIP budget that is over $10,000 to the committee for approval. Staff was directed to review this policy and ensure that this does not reoccur. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I'll move the resolution to purchase the Bobcat Toolcat from Farm Right Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $67,769.24, and to reallocate $7,669 from the purchase of the four Kubota mowers to cover the additional cost to the Toolcat over the 2015 CIP amount.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
The next item were some reports, we received reports of the June 30th, 2015 cash and investment portfolio, the June 30th quarterly investment activity report, June 30th quarterly interest and dividends report, the June 30th 10-year historical quarterly investments balances, the June 30th 10-year historical quarterly interest and dividends, and the June 30th quarterly Rice Trust Report. That was all for information only. Final item was under miscellaneous, had to do with capital improvement program. We noted that the CIP information that we recently received was for only 2016, and wondered about the four years after that, since it's in the five-year plan. Staff explained that the first year, the 2016, has been ranked and will be included in the 2016 budget. The remaining four years are estimates only, but have not been ranked. Both I and Mayor Calvin stated that the remaining four years' estimates need to be ranked before the final 2016 mayor's budget is proposed. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. File amendments. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion does carry. Councilmember Christiansen, Public Works Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on Tuesday, July 28th, 4:45 PM at City Hall. I called the meeting to order. The next item was public comments. Nobody was there to comment, so we went on to item number three, which is our biologically police update. This is for information only. Our chief police, Mr. Felt, was there, and he told us that the census for that day at the jail was 170. 97 were from the Department of Corrections, 72 from Candyway County, and one was from Swift County. He also told us that the calls for service the previous two weeks were 943. The majority of them were for traffic stops, public assists, and thefts. Total calls for service this year is approximately 15 days ahead of last year at the same date. The committee discussed recent criminal activity of thefts from unlocked cars and garages and the Neighborhood Watch Program. Two conditional offers have been made to fill vacant officer positions. With the candidates scheduled to complete physicals and psychological evaluations, the department received 39 applications for the vacancies, which is lower than the usual number, but the applications were all of good quality. Just to give you an example, they used to get 200 applications for one opening. Next is our fire chief, Mr. Frank Hanson. He informed us that the calls for service of the previous two weeks were 18, including service fire calls, several fire calls, vehicle accidents, and severe weather watches, and one natural gas leak. The total calls for service this year so far at the fire department is 189, which is 32 above last year. The department continues the hiring process of firefighters with 18 applicants scheduled for a written test. Of those 18 applicants, five will be hired at this time, with an additional five hopefully hired in the fall to achieve the goal of 40 firefighters. The committee also discussed the National Night Out, which is tomorrow night, August 4th, and we also discussed having the council's support for the Neighborhood Watch Program to encourage people to get involved. One suggestion offered was to have ward meetings with a possible presentation by LeAnn Nelson of the program, National Night Out Program. That was for information only. Item number four is a resolution. It has to do with the Walmart Foundation grant application for our DARE program. Once again, staff brought to our committee for approval authorization to apply for this Walmart Foundation for a $1,000 grant for the DARE program. If approved, the grant funds would be used for instructor training and development, as well as curriculum materials for students. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve this police department application with Walmart for a $1,000 grant for the DARE program, and if awarded, accept the grant as requested.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Item number five was also a Walmart Foundation grant application for the Shop with a Cop Program. Once again, staff presented to the committee an application to the Walmart Foundation for $1,000 for the Shop with a Cop Program. Officers volunteered their time to assist an underprivileged child in shopping for holiday gifts for the child's family using Walmart gift cards. The children are identified as having a need for this program to the department from Family Services or school counselors. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve the police department in that they apply with Walmart, for the Walmart Foundation for $1,000 for Shop with a Cop Grant, and if awarded, accept the grant as requested.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. All those, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Item number six is also a resolution. Has to do with purchasing and replacing a front-end loader with a snow pusher for the Public Works. Staff brought to our committee for approval the purchase of one 2015 John Deere 624K loader with a snow pusher from RDO Equipment through our state contract, which is number 9750. The amount of that contract would be $128,356. $222,000 was included in our 2015 CIP for this purchase, and the John Deere 624H loader is showing signs of age in the bearings, hydraulics, and transmission, as well as rusting issues. The current loader will be traded in, and the purchase price reflects that trade-in value of $54,300, which is good for a 2,000 unit. The committee discussed the option of keeping the existing loader and the cost comparison of repairs versus purchasing the new loader. The new unit will have the ability to utilize existing attachments, such as a bucket and forks, and will be used for snow removal of larger areas such as the Civic Center and the Community Center. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded, and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve this purchase and replace the front-end loader with a snow pusher with RDO Equipment through the state contract in the amount of $128,356.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Item number seven is also a resolution. Has to do with Swanson Field drainage and the warning track rehab. We were brought to our committee for approval the purchase of an Agrolime from Bryan Rock Products Incorporated in the amount of $24,395, and miscellaneous expenses totaling $2,000 for parts and rental equipment to complete the Swanson Field drainage and the warning track rehab. $50,000 was allocated in our 2015 CIP for both of these items, one at North Swanson Field and the other at Orange Baseball Field. After some discussion, as a motion was made, seconded, and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to approve the purchase of the Agrolime in the amount of $24,395, miscellaneous expenses from the Public Works Department in the amount of $2,000 for Swanson Field drainage and the warning track rehabilitation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Item number eight was the topic of Dunick Waterview Phase II infrastructure discussion. This is a motion. project by Dunick to replat the design to align Lakeland Drive to 28th Avenue with a T-intersection at 24th Avenue, and for the city to participate in project financing to the extent council recognizes the benefit to our greater community. We had a discussion including the difficulty in recommending a specific dollar amount of funding as the benefit to the city of any commercial slash industrial project is not known. Concerns were noted that businesses along 19th Avenue would be affected, and the safety issue of children crossing 19th Avenue as they walk to school. The committee discussed the concept of assessing the school for a portion of the project if the area is chosen to build a new elementary school, and if there was anything similar done when the high school was built. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the, the motion to recommend that the alignment of Lakeland Drive to 28th Avenue with a T-intersection at 24th Avenue Southeast for the city to participate in project financing to the extent that the council recognizes the benefit to the greater community.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question on the financing. It seems, it's a little nebulous at this particular time as to how much it's going to be, but I suspect it'll be, would it be in the 2016? Street improvements, is that where it would come about, or how do we know what to put in the budget, or? If you can help me, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Christiansen.
Hey, Councilmember Anderson, I currently do not have anything in the budget for this project. That doesn't help you with what's in there, but...
That's an answer. Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion. See none. All in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed to the motion, same sign. The motion does carry.
Item number nine was miscellaneous, and this was for information only. There was some discussion about potential stormwater pond locations, and the possibility of using stormwater utility fee in the future to fund some of these potential locations. Also, it was brought up that the yellow bike program was discussed, and we discussed the procedure by which the bikes are collected and returned to their appropriate stations. That was our last item on the agenda, and if there are no further questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Councilmember Amen.
Yeah, also, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. We also discussed at the meeting that it'd be helpful for the council to have a semi-annual report on stormwater improvements that are being made throughout the community, so when people are asking us, when the, when the street floods, we can say that we are making progress on it. And I think that was what we discussed, but it was not reflected in the minutes, and I'd just like it to be so, if that's possible.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to item three, the National Night Out. The city isn't sponsoring anything tomorrow. It's just the Garfield residence.
Chief Felt, could you assist us with that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city is not sponsoring anything specifically. We're supporting neighborhoods that wish to participate in the National Night Out Program. There are two neighborhoods, the Garfield neighborhood and the Eagles Landing neighborhood that are participating this year, so we'll have officers and staff there.
Do you know what times they're meeting?
I believe one is at, I think one is at 6:30 and the other is at 7:00. I think Garfield at 6:30.
I believe Garfield's at 6:00, I believe.
Garfield is at 6:00, and there's a potluck dinner. The picnic tables have been brought out. There's some canopies. There's some B.C. crafts for kids, and some root beer floats too, donated by one of the businesses in town, so anybody's welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Eagles Landing, I think, starts at 6:00 tomorrow night. I know all the neighbors were notified with a flyer, and that's something that they have done every year for a number of years, and I know that they're looking forward to having, I think the fire department's going to be there, an ambulance, and probably a police officer or two, so it's a, it's a great event.
Apologize to you, Councilmember Fagerly, I cut you off.
That's okay. So, the Garfield one, are you supposed to bring a dish to pass?
Supposed to bring, yeah, potluck, you bring a dish.
And utensils, or?
Uh, yeah, that would probably be helpful. There will be some paper plates there, I understand, so.
Okay. Thanks. I'm done now.
Okay, good. Okay. Additional discussion. Motion is on the table to file the minutes as presented. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Labor Relations, Councilmember Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Met Wednesday, July 29th, City Office building. There were no public comments. There was a motion made and seconded to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.003 to discuss labor negotiation strategies. Meeting was closed at 4:22 PM. Labor attorney Frank Madden was present to discuss labor negotiation strategies with the committee. Meeting was reopened at 5:22 PM on a motion and second by member Christiansen and by Mr. Anderson. As at this time, labor attorney Frank Madden left the meeting, and the other individuals joined the meeting. Meeting was called to order at 5:22. There were no public comments. Items requested to remove from the, from the table is for information. I addressed the next three items on the agenda that were tabled by the committee at the April 29th, 2015 meeting. These include the review of the three positions classified within the city, accounting supervisor, administrative assistant, and to the police department, and administrative assistant to the city administrator. He stated that, or I stated that it has been decided at this time due to the Bureau of Mediation Services Unit determination that these items were not to be removed from the table until the election is completed after August 18th, 2015. I expressed that the council is trying to be amiable about the situation, yet at this time, they have been advised by the labor attorney, Frank Madden, not to discuss the position classifications. Item number four was an action item. Mr. Halliday presented a revised memorandum of agreement between the city and the ASME general, general bargaining unit for setting up a healthcare savings plan. He explained the language of the MOA was not acceptable to the Minnesota State Retirement Systems, and their finance director was unable to establish the program on the city's behalf. Labor attorney Frank Madden worked in conjunction with the MSRS office and the ASME representatives to prepare this revised agreement, which should establish the healthcare savings account and is presented in the form of MOA. Staff recommended the council approve the MOA as drafted. The motion was made and seconded and directed by labor attorney Frank Madden to present this document to the MSRS, and that motion carried, and I would move the recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt this memorandum of agreement. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
Item number five was the approve officer's successful completion of probationary status. Mr. Halliday stated that there were three actions from this item. He informed the council that pursuant to the personnel policy, there's a requirement that the city administrator get final approval to grant permanent status to an employee. He recommended granting full-time status to the two police officers who recently completed their probationary period, but the League of Minnesota Cities has long advised the city to remove the word "permanent" from its policy. The first staff recommendation is to grant the two officers full-time status. He then requested the council amend the personnel policy, removing the word "permanent" in several areas, and allowing the granting of full-time status upon completion of probationary periods by the city administrator. Motion was made by Councilman Christiansen to grant officers Leval Vasqueras full-time status with the city of Wilmer, and it was seconded by Mr. Anderson, and it carried. I will move their recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to grant full-time status to these two police officers. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, same sign. The motion does carry.
Motion was made and seconded to direct staff to make changes presented to the personnel policy in legislative print to be brought to the Labor Relations Committee at a future meeting. Motion was made and seconded, and it was carried, and I would move the recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Uh, motions are made and seconded for changes to the personnel policy. Additional discussion. I have a question to this. Kevin, are you looking to get the permanent status replaced with full-time status now, or are you looking to do everything at one time? I thought you were going to try to get just the full-time status changed out.
I intend to just change all those notes that talk about permanent status out of there in legislative print and bring it back to the labor at the next meeting. Just that item. These two, by their action, are awarded full-time status already tonight.
Correct.
Yeah.
Understand that part. I thought that you were looking to make quite a few changes, but this is just directing you to do that? Is that what you're saying? I mean, we've had conversations before.
Well, they're both. I'm going to come back with a amended policy to remove the word "permanent," and to remove the council, strike that out, and have the appointment by the city administrator. That's what will be on the table for discussion.
Additional discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion does carry.
There are no further business. We adjourned at 5:30, 31. I'll move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion, same sign. The motion does carry. Councilmember Fagerly, Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Development met Thursday, July 30th, 4:45, right here in this room, and it was videotaped. Present was the entire council. Others in attendance was Mayor Calvin, Bruce Peterson, Director of Planning and Development, Steve Okens, Finance Director, Frank Hanson, Fire Chief, Steve Rehnquist, EDC Director, Jolene Hovland, Habitat for Humanity, Don Winkler, a board member for Habitat, and Dave Little from West Central Tribune. Item one was called to order. Two public comments. No one was there to speak to us. Item three, capital improvement program. Discussion for information only. Full council was present to initiate discussion of the capital improvement program process. Mayor Calvin introduced the subject and explained how the capital improvement budget fits into the overall city budget. Steve Okens, Finance Director, presented a PowerPoint outlining the capital improvement planning process. Mr. Okens noted that a staff committee reviewed, scored, and ranked all requests using six criteria. Primary sources of funding for the capital improvement program are bonding, cash, general revenues, special revenue, and state, federal aid. Mr. Okens noted that there was approximately $900,000 carryover from the 2014 budget that can be used for the CIP. Additional dollars will come from other unspent replacement, other unspent capital projects. The area focused for 2016 are pavement management, municipal facilities, vehicle replacement, storm and surface water management, and the community parks plan. Planning and Development Services Director Peterson presented a spreadsheet showing departmental requests for 2016 as scored and ranked by the staff committee. The council raised a number of questions about the projects and funding sources. Mayor Calvin requested that the city, council members review the CIP budget information in a Dropbox as updates are made available. The CIP budget proposals were received for information only, and we did receive from Mr. Peterson how they scored all the projects, so it should be in your Dropbox. Item four, EDC update. Steve Rehnquist, EDC Director, provided an update on EDC activities. He reviewed developmental statistics from the last 10 years, such as retail spending, employment, and weekly payroll, that all demonstrate the growth of the area economy. He said the biggest projects to deal with in the near future will be the Wilmer Y. Rail Project and the industrial park expansion. He said it was a good opportunity to bring rail service into the west end of the new industrial park. He did express concern that the city has priced the industrial land too high. Mr. Rehnquist praised the land write-down policy as one means of reducing the cost of industrial park land. He emphasized the importance of the turkey industry to not just Candyway County, but to the entire region. He said the EDC was pushing the U of M for a turkey research facility, and noted the expansion of activity in the avian lab located at the Mid Central Research and Outreach Center. He concluded by saying that the city and county need to grow their way to prosperity rather than save their way to prosperity. Because the jobs program is shutting down statewide, a number of local companies will be losing some property tax benefits. Mr. Rehnquist urged the council to consider other means of assisting the local companies as those benefits expire. He concluded his presentation by stating that he would make the EDC five-year plan available to the council as an electronic document, and he did send that to Administrator Halliday, and he did forward that to our iPad, so we do have that.
Questions?
Anybody have questions at this point? Anything to present, Councilmember Nelson?
Just wondered if that document can be made available to the public somehow, since it was sent to just the council. Can we add it to the minutes, or?
Or the website.
Yeah, one way or the other.
Put it on the website would be a good idea. Yeah, it's a good idea. Anything else?
I think it's the same plan that the EDC and the county board receives, though. Should be numerous places.
Okay, continue.
All right.
You needed a break, right?
I did. Item five, Habitat for Humanity request. Staff presented a request by Habitat for Humanity that the city gifted them a lot described as Lot 1, Block 2, Pleasant View 4th Edition. This is property that the city received as a gift a number of years ago and has since improved with utilities and streets. Jolene Hovland from Habitat was present to answer questions such as the number of homes they have completed in Wilmer, over 10, and how many homes have come back to Habitat because of the purchasers could not perform on the mortgages, and approximately 3, we were told. Ms. Hovland said that Habitat currently needs a lot for a five-to-six-bedroom home, and that the lot they have on North 7th Street, which they purchased and had that old white sixplex, I think it was, is too large for the house, and they need to build a duplex on that one. The property is valued at $6,300, and there is approximately $9,600 in special assessments against the property. Ms. Hovland stated that Habitat would be willing to take on the assessments as those would be passed on to the buyer and be payable over the 10 years. There was a motion made and seconded, and passed that the city sell the lot for $1 with the buyer paying the assessments. Now introduce that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to enter an agreement with Habitat for Humanity on their lot purchase. Discussion. See none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
All right. Item six, wastewater treatment facility land sale proposal. Staff presented a proposal by a local company to purchase approximately 4.8 acres of land at the wastewater treatment facility site to develop an ag industrial use. The council had previously given preliminary approval to the concept and direct staffed to negotiate an agreement. That has been done. Offer on the table is consistent with an appraisal of the land as ordered by the city. This offer is for the sale of 4.8 acres in the amount of $54,000. The price represents the value of the land as ag land, with a premium added due to accessibility to municipal sewer. The committee discussed the nature of the business and concluded that would be a good fit at that site due to the fact that the new facility will generate some truck traffic and odors. It was noted that the volume and strength of discharge to the sewer system would be very minimal. Following discussion, there was a motion made and passed that the city proceed with the sale of the property, that the buyer surveyed the property and provide a legal description to the city... description to the city for the purpose of ordinance adoption, and that the staff pursue the drafting of a development agreement governing the activities of the buyer with respect to the site development and sewer construction. And I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Kevin, is this a roll call or a simple motion?
Uh, at this point, it's just a standing motion.
Okay. Discussion. Councilmember Aman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last sentence there was noted, "The volume and strength of discharge to the sewer system would be very minimal." Somebody explain "minimal." And, and I'm just concerned.
Community Development Director Peterson.
I'm in, Mayor Calvin, members of the council. In meeting with the company, the estimates they have given me for the waste, the total flow is about 9,800 gallons per month. So probably less than you use at your house. Very minimal flow. In fact, a concern is that they're going to have very little flow. It's going to be similar strength as to the waste that is currently generated by Wilmer Poultry Company's hatchery in the industrial park. So, um, from a treatment standpoint, very insignificant.
Thank you.
Additional discussion. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
All right. Item seven was old business. Councilman Plowman asked about cleanup efforts at 944 Olaf Avenue Northwest, and progress is proceeding, so we'll wait till August to find out if everything is done. If there's no further questions, I move to file the minutes.
Motion made, I'm sorry. Second. Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. Audrey, was that you? Did you want something?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Going to switch back to the other.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Both, same sign. Motion does carry. Apologize for that. I thought I seen your hand go up, so, out of the corner of my eye. Next is consideration of subcommittee vacancies. Kevin, could you assist us with this, please?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council. At the reorganizational meeting on January 12, 2015, the council adopted resolution assigning committees, attendants, and council members to various committees that the city has. Councilmember Dacken was assigned to the Finance Committee, the Labor Relations Committee, the Airport Commission, and the Municipal Utilities Commission. It is customary from our normal protocol that the, that all four wards are assigned to the council subcommittees, but there's no known protocol for other committees such as the Airport Commission and the Municipal Utilities Commission. It is noted here that Councilmember Plowman is an alternate to the Municipal Utilities Commission. This would be his opportunity to let the council know if he could be the main appointee, and if he so chooses, staff's recommending that you appoint an alternate. By resolution, Mr. Mayor.
So we're looking for an alternate to the Municipal Utilities Commission if Councilmember Plowman chooses to take the appointment as the primary? Is that what I heard you say?
All four of them, but that's his opportunity to speak on being an alternate.
Okay. Councilmember Plowman, what would be your request?
Um, I am open to that idea. That would, that would be all right with me. The one conflict is, um, meeting time generally falls right in the middle of a workday for me. So if, if, if no other options exist, I will take the appointment and I will make it work. Um, there will be some instances where I'm not able to make the meeting, so the alternate would be, um, at least encourage or if not, expected to go. With regards to the opening at the Airport Commission, I guess I have interest there as well, and I believe that's maybe a little bit more conducive to my work schedule, so I'd be.
We'll, we'll take one at a time.
Okay.
Um, so what we have is, uh, in, first off, thank you for stepping in on short notice. I, uh, I contacted Councilmember Plowman after I received the resignation, and he stepped up right away and actually attended the next meeting along with a tour of facilities, from what I understand.
Yeah, it was a good time. I learned a lot.
So, yes, so thank you for doing that. So, um, council, what do you wish to do? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Nelson?
Just a question. After the, the vacancy is filled, will we go through this same exercise again, allowing the new person the opportunity to get on some of these outside commissions?
It would be my recommendation. You can also choose to not fill a vacancy.
And leave it open.
And leave everything open until that point comes.
Councilmember Nelson?
I guess I was just questioning whether it couldn't be a temporary process until a permanent, um, was replaced. Um, you know, with that, I guess that's up to, you know, I guess it's up to us, but I believe that's, um, you know, would be appropriate also to, uh, to just ask for it to be temporarily, temporarily filled.
So the question is, do we want to temporarily fill it or do we want to leave it open? Okay, I'm not seeing any direction that way, so, uh, the Airport Commission, Councilmember Plowman has expressed an interest. Is there anybody that's opposed to Councilmember Plowman assisting with the Airport Commission?
Also move to appoint him to the Airport Commission. Mr. Mayor, I'd rather do all of them in one resolution.
Okay. Is that all right?
You'll do a point by resolution.
Okay. And then our past practice has been to have a representative of each of the wards on the Finance Committee, Labor Relations Committee, so I certainly would speak in favor of that. So maybe what we need to do is leave those positions open, have Councilmember Nelson sit in on those two, and then have Council, Councilmember Aman, I'm sorry, Plowman to the Airport Commission. Is there any opposition to that? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In other words, leave it as is, and Ward Four will be represented at each meeting anyway.
Correct.
Because if somebody's absent, somebody sits in, so that makes sense.
Okay.
How about the Utilities Commission alternate?
I didn't hear any action on that. I, I paused for direction there. I think what I heard Councilmember Anderson say is, "Let's leave it open until we have the election and come back and revisit it," is what I heard. So I took that as direction. Not seeing a motion. Is there?
Well, if he, he's unable to attend, as he has stated, there will be a need to be an alternate, or he can call someone to fill in for him, I guess.
He could call somebody, or he could call the mayor. Call Kevin, tell him that, uh, you know, we need somebody to sit in. I think what the key here is for people to get caught up to speed. I mean, you know, this is a pretty, uh, pretty important position.
Yes, it is.
And depending upon our next action, I think that it, you know, um, I mean, I know that I would not feel comfortable, as an example, just going and sitting in on, on their meeting. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty significant committee. Councilmember Nelson?
I was just going to comment that I believe that the committee structure has been set up with, oh, with wards and with a representative from each ward. I think that's important. I am willing to fill in on a temporary basis for finance and labor. If I'm unable to attend, I will be calling and asking someone else to fill in in those positions, but I do believe the ward structure needs to remain intact unless we want to tear apart the committees and look at something different. I think it's important that Ward Four be represented at the committees.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm hearing that from council as well. Um, Councilmember Plowman, are you comfortable with that as serving as the lead, and then we'll give you assistance as, as needed when you have a conflict on municipal utilities?
Regarding specifically municipal utilities.
That one item, correct?
Yeah, yeah, for this time being, yeah.
Okay. So at this point, I'd entertain your motion if you, or your resolution if you choose. Mr. Councilmember Aman?
I believe the motion is going to be, um, I'm understanding, if you could repeat it, please, is for Andrew Plowman to be the representative for the airport, lay us on for the airport, and also for the MUC unless he can't make it, which any of us will be called. And then Audrey Nelson will be the Labor and Finance Representative. And I will, I'll move that motion, recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Kevin, is that clear as mud?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is the consideration of council Ward Four vacancy. Kevin, we have this all in front of us, and certainly would be my intent that you could paraphrase what's in front of us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you do have a rather detailed summary in front of you. Simply following the city charter, it is clear that you do have options because of the time remaining at this vacancy. It's less than two years' time, so the choices are to fill the vacancy by appointment or to hold an election roughly in about 90 days. If you choose to do the election to fill the vacancy, it just talks about we need to file for office. No primary will be held. It'll be the highest vote getter from the total number of people who had filed. Election must be on a Tuesday. Just a little history there, in 1992, when David Lean resigned, and in 2004, David Chapin resigned, the city council also had options to appoint a qualifying citizen to fill the vacancy. Point of record, that qualifying citizen must be 21 years of age on the day that they take the oath of office. In those instances, the council chose to ask citizens to remit a letter to the mayor noting their desire to serve as a council member. A special meeting was held. They interviewed prospective applicants and then adopted a appointing resolution later. If the election is chosen, it's a full election. The M-100 precinct counters will be programmed, the auto-mark handicap assist machines will be programmed, and an absentee ballot board will be established by a council resolution. We're incurring costs estimated there at $6,200.
Earlier tonight, we heard from some public testimony that this would cost us about $20,000. So are you thinking it's more the $6,200 or the $20,000 we heard in the open forum?
I recommend that you go with the city clerk's recommendation.
Okay, just checking. Okay. Um, you know, I think that, you know, this, this is obviously, obviously something for the council to decide what to do. In hearing, we've got the 45 days. We really are no, under no pressure to make a decision tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct, but the third, for clarity, the third meeting is September 8th, and your deadline is September 5th, so you only have one more meeting without holding a special election. In the first one that I mentioned earlier at the vacancy, there were like three special elections to deal with this, and the council had a special election every week. So that deadline, if things are not made by August 17th, you could hold one at the end of August for a third meeting. But your deadline is September 5th.
Okay. So, um, I guess, you know, from what I've heard from the public, and I'm sure all of you have heard a lot, um, but from what I've heard is that if we could have an opportunity to get some input, more input from the, from the public, and I met with Councilmember Nelson today in regards to this, and just said, you know, what would it look like if we tried to have some public meetings to where people could come and actually have a conversation? Um, and so that seemed to make some sense to me. This is a council decision, it's not my decision, but I certainly would hope that we would lean towards the special election and to allow us ample time to decide if we want to do either the appointment process, which we could make that decision on the 17th, or if we want to do the election, we can make that decision on the 17th as well and be well within the parameters. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion at the council. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We many times, almost all the time, rely on staff recommendations, and Kevin, I guess I'm asking you, what, what, what's this going to entail as far as yourself, because you handle all the elections and now you're the interim administrator? How do you see this falling? I mean, what, what's going to be best for, to keep you on task with city goings-on?
Well, it'll certainly make for some busy times, but I don't believe I stood alone in the programming of the opening or the election, uh, in March of 2014. Audrey, help me, was it 13? The county jumped in and helped program the machines, and that's an essential part, even though it is only six machines. I normally assist the county, uh, when I can to try to get the precinct machines for the city of Wilmer programmed because they have like 47 or 45 precincts totaling. So we can do and successfully, uh, prepare for an election with the staff that we have trained and with the assistance of the county.
So your.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember.
So your hands won't be tied for hours or days?
To pull off an election, one of the most difficult tasks is to get volunteers to come forward, even though they're paid, that's a bad word, election judges to step forward for the price that we pay. They're not going to be wealthy from it, and it's a great commitment of 6 o'clock in the morning to about 9:00 PM at night, and they need training. And I have good staff members that can call people. We use the media to get the word out. I also have probably 70 trained election judges from the whole election, and I'm only running an election in one quarter of the city. So I think the task will be less formidable than a full election.
So we have a couple of weeks to think about it, basically.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, I need a little, little more clarity on, you said an election in 90 days. If we decided on the 17th, we, we didn't take the full 45 days, it would be, I mean, we wouldn't still be looking 90 days out from today, would we?
I believe it would be 90 days. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let this individual to the side of me, but I believe it's 90 days.
Have the city attorney answer the question.
Okay, I'll let the whole thing go.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my interpretation is that from the moment you, if you decide to call a special election, from the moment you call a special election, the election must be held within 90 days of that decision. So if you decide on August 17th that you want to have a special election, you'd have 90 days, staff would have 90 days from that date to hold the election.
Um, Kevin, if you want to respond also in regards to the military piece that we talked about this afternoon?
I, assuming you're going to make no decision tonight, I will attempt to lay out a timetable from August 17th. You generally have to wait two weeks to notice to let people know that filings are open. Must be on a Tuesday at 8:00 AM. You would open filings for two weeks. It must close at 5:00 PM on a Tuesday. And at the end of this, I have to skip a few weeks, not many, for the preparation of the ballot. We must have the ballot prepared and ready for absentee voting 46 days before the election. That's a federal law, Elections Commission, or encouraged anyways, state law also, maybe both, but that was for the veterans that are far away to get that timetable turned around, and that's really making about a two-week period in there for the county with my assistance to get the ballot prepared at the end of filings. I will be talking to the Charter Commission when we meet again about lengthening that maybe at 10 days. It makes it very tight, and there's generally no room for error. That's an older rule. Unfortunately, I never caught it when we were working with the Charter Commission, and the old rule was 30 days of having the absentee ballots, are the ballots ready for absentee voting, and that's been extended to 46. So I'm, I've lost 16 days that I need to make up, and perhaps the Charter Commission would consider that at another time. Today, I don't have that, and we can still make the deadline of printing ballots in two weeks because there should be nobody else at the printing office about this time.
Okay. Councilmember Fagerly and then Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, since there's over 12 months, it's more 16 months right now, I'd prefer.
Well, since there's over 12 months, it's more 16 months right now, I'd prefer the election over the appointment. I remember back in 92 when Dave Lean resigned because I ran against him, and Bill Appergren got appointed because he said he wouldn't run again, because it, it's an unfair advantage being an incumbent at times. And same way when David Chapin left, Corky Berg said he wouldn't run again, but I think there's time for an election, and I'd prefer that.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned, Kevin, that there will be no primary. Is that charter or...
Charter requirement that the high vote wins, doesn't matter if there's two people or 16.
So if there's four people, someone with 26% could win.
Additional discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a couple of people volunteer, or volunteer, submit their names for election or, or appointment, or was it strictly an appointment?
There were two people that submitted their names under consideration if there was going to be an appointment process, that they wanted their name out there, and those two names were forwarded to the full council at approximately 4:00 this afternoon, give or take 10 minutes, I believe.
Okay. Well, that'll give us something to think about too in the next two weeks, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think we have a decision to make today. In two weeks, we have a decision to make. Well, actually, we could push it off according to what Mr. Halliday has said, but, you know, let's get some public input, let's hear what the people have to say, so that's what I, my recommendation would be. Councilmember Nelson?
Just was going to comment, just a clarification that the council's okay with getting that public input. I know you had talked with me, and we had talked about doing some meet and greet kind of things, or allowing, setting up some time, so I just want to make sure that the council's okay with that in this next two-week timeframe, so.
Yeah, kind of what was talked about, kind of what we talked about, is just, you know, getting it out there in the public, you know, get it on social media. I'm sure the paper would, would give us a little coverage, and if we let people know where we're going to meet, any council member would be welcome to attend that as long as we didn't have more than three people there. I would attend that as well. Again, Councilmember Nelson, it's her ward, she's representing the people, the citizens from that area at this point, and I think it's just a good opportunity for us to have open, transparent government and have those discussions, so I'm not seeing any opposition from the council unless someone tells me differently. Are we all okay with that? Okay. So this will be taken for information only then? Are we okay with that? Move on to the next item. Mr. Peterson, consideration of the final plat.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, under consideration tonight is the final plat of an addition that's named Free 35-Foot Edition. I explained that name previously, but just to remind the council, it's because a portion of an existing street was vacated and the property owner received 35 feet of right-of-way from the city. He combined that 35 feet with three lots and now has proposed to replat that into four lots. It's being replatted for single-family housing development. Plating Commission has approved the final plat without any conditions, and it's a recommendation of staff that the council do likewise.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the final plat of Free 35-Foot Edition. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls same sign, that motion does pass. Consideration for the request of a reap pointment, help me with that one.
Apportionment.
Of special assessments. Mr. Peterson?
Concurrent with the filing of the final plat, the council has been asked to take action on the street assessments that exist for the three lots that were the original three lots being assessed on Pleasant View Drive. The three lots have been re-subdivided into four lots now with the approval of the final plat, and the total value of the special assessments due and payable today would be reapportioned equally among the four lots that are, that were replatted. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution, reapportioning the assessments as requested.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, does that mean they have to bring in a fourth sewer and water?
Mr. Peterson?
It was three-lot plat, now it's four?
There will have to be a resolution to the utility service issue, yes.
So they will be bringing in the fourth, in other words?
Yes, in some form or fashion, they'll have to get connections to the, to the main for that fourth unit, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by, I'm sorry, resolution, roll call.
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Aman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Consideration of setting public hearing for ordinance amendment to close the Windstream office. Mr. Halliday?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, back in November of 2001, we have ordinance 1152 adopted granting NTEL at the time, now Windstream, a franchise requiring them to keep an office maintained in the city. Following activity presented to the council two weeks ago, it is staff's recommendation to allow them to close their office, and in so doing, it would be an amendment to an ordinance. Therefore, staff is recommending that you set the public hearing for 7:01 on August 17 to consider the ordinance amendment allowing for that closure.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set the public hearing to consider closing of the Windstream office. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Announcement of council committee meeting dates. Finance?
Finance will meet Monday, August 10, 4:45, Conference Room 1.
Public works safety?
Tuesday, August 11, 4:45.
Labor?
Nothing scheduled, or we will have a meeting, Kevin?
I think that will be enough.
Okay, I have some things I can add to that. We will have a meeting Wednesday at 4:45, Conference Room 1.
Meeting Development?
No meeting.
Anything else for the good of the order? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, we are adjourned.